There it is.
All right, you ready?
Yeah.
Is Commissioner Winfrey's motion gonna be an add-on to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
All right, time to get started. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners to order at this time. At this time, I'd like to ask for our Pledge of Allegiance to be done by Commissioner Gary Getzinger, followed by our invocation. Actually, we'll reverse it. Roll call. All right, thank you. Madam Chair, roll call.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
As.
Commissioner Kuznel.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Huelling.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Commissioner James Avery and our Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Gary Getzinger.
Shall we pray? Gracious Father, first of all, we thank you for this day. Thank you, Lord, for your travel and grace for all of us to arrive here safely, and we pray the same as we leave. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to conduct the business of our community and do it in a way and fashion that you have for us, Lord, in your vision. We thank you and we love you, and we give you all the praise and honor. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First on the agenda, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from our July 23, 2025 meeting. What is your pleasure?
They're moved.
They're forward.
All right, they're moved by Commissioner Wayhill, supported by Commissioner Avery. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, motion passes. Next before us, we have Resolution 2025-2130, Approval of Meeting Minutes from our August 13, 2025 meeting.
Forward.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Shoemaker, supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It is so ordered. At this time, that brings us to our public speaking portion of our meeting. If there are any members of the public who wish to address this body, please come to the mic at this time. If there are those who desire to line up, feel free to do so to the, to your right, my left, and then feel free to approach the podium. If you would, please say your name and your city, township, or village of residence.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Lois Nickel, and I'm a resident of the city of Flushing. I really appreciate my senior center, and I participate in many of the classes, activities, and events throughout the year. Everybody I know always voted to renew the county senior services tax millage because we always thought all those tax dollars went to finance our local senior centers. I'm really shocked to have just learned that less than one-third of those dollars actually goes to senior centers. I'm also very concerned to learn that while the tax raised more money this year, senior centers received no increase in their allocation this year, while those agencies that get more than two-thirds of the millage money received an enormous increase in their allocations, almost nine-hundred thousand. It's my understanding that you are about to approve a budget that does the same thing next year. We are told that over the last thirteen years, senior centers received no increases in their allocations in eleven of those years. And it's also my understanding that the number of those agencies who get two-thirds of the money keeps increasing, and they keep receiving a larger and larger share of the county millage money, and senior centers keep receiving a smaller and smaller share of the millage revenue. All of this seems terribly wrong and unfair to me, and to others I have spoken also feel the same way. People vote for that millage to support their senior centers. Senior centers should be getting at least half of those senior tax dollars. I'm asking this board to please take a fresh, closer look at how these tax dollars are being distributed. When there's more money, everyone should get an equal increase. If you are here because you share this concern, please stand up.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marie Zuck, and I live in the city of Flushing. I am here in support of the senior centers, obviously. We are very fortunate in this community to have the senior millage. When I talk to people around the state from other communities, nobody has ever heard of anything like this. So we are very unique. We are very fortunate that we do support this. I am not going to say anything against providers because I don't even know who they are. Frankly, up until about three weeks ago, I only knew of two, so I cannot say anything positive or negative about them. This is strictly because of, I'm here for the senior centers. As to senior centers, you're going to see statistics, and you're going to see programs, and you're going to see the newsletters, and you're going to see exactly the kinds of things that the centers offer. However, that isn't really what is the senior centers are all about. You can see, I'm a senior. I'm seventy-eight years old, okay, and so, and I'm retired. I was a school principal, so I'm retired. And so as we become retired, we become by ourselves, we get older, kids grow up and go away, we lose friends, we lose other people that are important to us, and we enter into a new stage in our lives that are very, very scary, very scary. Let me tell you about a lady that I met at the local grocery store. She happened to be from out of town. Her son moved her into Flushing to be closer to him. She, she stopped me. They asked me where to find something at the store, and so we started talking. And she started telling me her story and her fears. And so I told her, go to the senior center. You will find activities. You will find a support. You will find friends. She's done that, and she's become very active now at the senior center. So what the senior centers are actually doing is they provide communities for all of us that are seniors. So thousands of people across this county are part of this community, of these communities where we find support, activities, and friendships. They're not just the activities. You have to remember that they provide a service, a place for us to belong. One of my best examples of this is one of our seniors that I happened to be at an assisted living, and I happened to run into a ninety-three-year-old veteran who came to the senior center. And I went up to him, and I just said hello, and he looked at me, and he got a big grin on his face, and he said, didn't remember my name. He said, senior center. And what he told me is he couldn't wait to get back. So I called our director, and he got his lunch buddies to come over there to visit him. That made his day. That's the kind of support that the senior centers provide. So as you determine how to spend this millage money, I hope that you look at the people that are voting for this millage. Who are they, and why are they voting for it? Because when I ask people, and it doesn't matter what age, I thought I was the only one that didn't know about providers, but honestly, they all think that the majority of the money is going to the senior centers. Also, I would support the idea of you having a third-party evaluation of how this millage money is being spent. As a principle, we used to have to have that done in education, whether it was because of accreditation or because of the state. We had third-party evaluations, and I would recommend that you do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I am Janet Carnell. I'm an active senior living in District Eight where Commissioner Dale Wayhill serves. I've held many jobs outside of the home. At Mott Adult High School in Flint, I taught alternative ed in adults for twenty-three years. While teaching at Mott Adult, I discovered such inequity in our teachers' pay and benefits were unthinkable compared to K-12 teachers. We were real teachers too, and, but somehow, we had been treated like stepchildren in the system in our pay, nonexistent benefits, by our own school board. Needless to say, we unionized. Well, last week, when I listened at home to your meeting and heard our senior centers had only two increases in the last seventeen years, stepchild syndrome appears to have happened again. Our sister senior service providers are equal partners with the senior centers in serving the senior community in Genesee County. We are not stepchildren to one another. I have been attending senior centers in Genesee County for fourteen years and have served as a volunteer in five senior centers and have found it very rewarding work. I currently attend activities four days a week, and on Saturdays twice a month, you can come find me at the Hope United Methodist Church, welcoming seniors from nine of our senior centers from Genesee County. We are active card players, fighting back dementia, and keeping our brains active. I have been treated like a stepchild by a former employer, and now, as a senior, I feel I'm being treated like a stepchild once more. Is it possible the senior service providers are receiving sixty-three percent of the millage money, and their sister senior centers only thirty percent this next fiscal year? Oh, Commissioners, if this is true, this senior is outraged. I want you to see me. See me, and those thousands like me that are walking into senior centers each week, each and every week. Do not allow stepchild syndrome to happen to us. Our senior service providers are sisters to us and our senior centers. One does not deserve less or more than the other. Commissioners, please find the truth. Do not rely on others to guide you. I am personally asking each of you to look at the statistics and the senior millage dispersments for next year again, and fix it if necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Suzette Sellers. I am a seventy-seven-year-old senior who utilizes the Flushing Senior Center every day, not only through the activities, but through volunteering. I am the generation called the Baby Boomers, and there are a lot of us, especially in Genesee County. The senior millage affords us so many resources for service providers and for our sixteen senior centers. I would like to give each of you the newsletter that our members of, we get each month. So if you would like to see these, I would like to give each one of these to you. If you read it, you will realize how the center benefits their members. Our center is composed of very active members and a wonderful staff. We come to the center to connect, and staying connected is one of the most important part of aging. Once a senior loses the ability to stay active and connect, they lose hope, and they start to decline, and they get old. The senior center is a place to come for special programs, events, and activities. For three dollars, you can sign up for a hot meal. For some seniors, this is the only hot meal they receive all day. Our stray quilters group makes blankets for children with cancer through Project Linus. Once a week, we can line dance like nobody's watching and beat on drums to keep our hearts and brains healthy. Come to our centers and try, just to see what we do. The bottom line is, we weren't a bunch, we were a bunch of aging boomers that grew up with soda shops, sock hops, cruising drive-ins. We belonged to clubs, and we had clubhouses to go to. We raised our children, we paid taxes, and we voted for special millages. Many of us are grandparents, and we need places for our senior centers to connect. One more piece of information, I now have children old enough to become members of our senior center. They can come exercise with me. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roya Sultani. I'm a resident of Genesee County, currently residing in the city of Flushing. I have viewed a video of last Wednesday's Health and Human Services meeting, and as a taxpayer, I must share that I'm very concerned about how ill-informed this body of Commissioners seemed in regards to the history, implementation, and distribution of funds concerning the senior millage money. I do have an appreciation for an employee named Lynn. She seems an intelligent, dedicated, and hard-working individual. I've seen her at numerous events around Genesee County, usually in a capacity that is serving our citizens. Although I'm very impressed with Lynn, I don't believe she's an elected official, and therefore should not be actively steering this government body to make important financial decisions about the money collected from the senior millage based solely on her recommendations. From the video that I spoke of, this committee seemed awestruck when presented with the facts and figures that Mr. Greg Matheson imparted at his forum. Honestly, it was not a good look for the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, and it did not give me a sense of confidence in the decisions our local government is making on behalf of our citizens. And so I ask this board, please do your homework. Hold your service providers to the same scrutiny that you reserve for your senior centers. Make certain you understand, accept, and cannot see a way to further improve the overall vision, quality, and efficiency of the programs you support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. As you know, I'm Greg Matheson. I'm the Executive Director at the Flushing Area Senior Center. First off, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to present last week, and I truly appreciated the questions and comments you have afterward. But I have to say, it was clear to me, you were not aware of quite a bit of the data and the results that I shared with you. That were shared by, with me by the Office of Senior Services, things as simple as the breakdown of the millage percentage-wise. I speculate, and my gut tells me, when you heard that information, you had some natural instincts. First off, why haven't you received these statistics in the past? Why haven't you received the data in the past before setting the budget? Your second instinct was to ask why there is such a disparity in funding. And then finally, I think for most of you, your instinct tells you that you want to address this disparity. I think your gut tells you that. So my recommendation to you is follow your instincts. Provide a short-term remedy for next year, and in the long term, seek outside consultation. Do a cost-value analysis of all the programming through that millage. Determine a long-term funding formula based on that analysis, using a variety of different pieces of data to inform future program funding, which will value the services of all stakeholders throughout the senior millage. The current funding formula has been and is currently broken. There is no legitimate justification for only receiving two raises over the past seventeen years, and of course, I'm talking about the senior centers, and only receiving thirty percent of the allocation this year with no proposed increase for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers?
Good evening. It's beautiful up here, and I need a key for the locks because this is our house. No, I'm just joking. Hey, you know, the sad part is that this is a community of a lot of retirees, a lot of seniors. And, you know, just, just on the streets alone, we always say, kids and seniors are off limits. And we have to respect our seniors. They have done a lot in this community. Sit-down strike, I mean, they have done a lot and guided this county in a lot of different ways. I was speaking to someone, and it's ironic that, that this is what they are speaking about today. I was speaking to someone, and she was telling me about the meals that they bring to the houses, to the house for seniors. And she was like, man, I cannot eat that. It's that bad. And when I looked at it, I was like, man, I wouldn't feed this to my dog. What is it that we can do to help the seniors, man? They shouldn't have to come out and line up in a line to speak out and say, please help us, because they hadn't done a lot to pave the way for us. So if anything, we should be asking them, calling them, taking surveys, asking them, what is it that we can do for you to where you can retire, you can sit back and do what it is that you want to do happily for, you know, the time that you are here. It, it shouldn't be hard for us to do that. Seriously, it, it really shouldn't. We should really be looking at our seniors and really, truly helping them instead of hurting them. And one other thing, y'all are so respectful. The two minutes, people go over, you all don't say anything. You let them finish out. But at least give us three in order to be able to say, say something, man, because you're gonna have to speak so fast in that two minutes that I can't even touch on half of the stuff that's on the agenda. So at least three. Let's meet halfway or two and a half, all right? Thank you.
Anyone else desire to address a commission in this meeting? Yes.
Good evening. Good evening, Genesee County Board of Commissioners. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm just gonna read so I don't get lost in my thoughts. So hello, I introduced myself last week. My name is Brooke Au. I'm the Executive Director of the Family Service Agency in Mid-Michigan here in Genesee County, and I've had the honor of overseeing our senior millage-funded programs since 2017. And these programs include senior guardianship services, in-home chore services, the visually and hearing impaired program, and the senior smart transportation program. We are on the front lines, ensuring seniors in Genesee County receive essential support, essential support such as social security and pension oversight, housing and healthcare access, Medicaid and Medicare enrollment, housing placement, medical care coordination, and transportation to vital appointments and assistance with visual and hearing loss through specialized hearing aids and technology. We do a lot more, but I summarized it. So with this, just please remember, the majority of the service provider program recipients are homebound Genesee County seniors. While I have maybe a dozen senior millage clients out of thousands that actually utilize our senior centers, it's clear that the main reason for the, for the confusion as to why the funding is allocated the way that it is, and that the seniors that benefit from my senior millage programs and all senior millage service provider program recipients are homebound. They are disabled, and they are kept alive and well in their homes, aging in place, and out of institutions because of service provider programming. A millage they too have paid into for over, for nearly twenty years. Their lives literally depend on our services. Their well-being depends on our services. I hope that we can all, as everybody who receives senior millage dollars in my county, we can evaluate this apples-to-oranges comparison taking place here in this ongoing dispute over funding allocations and what is right and what is wrong. But I implore all of my county Commissioners to please take the time and speak to the seniors receiving service provider services, those who cannot make it to these meetings, and take notice of the wonderful job our senior millage team, Lynn, Allison, and Brianna, have done for years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I can't stand for too long, so... My name's Thomas Osowski. I moved to Flushing three years ago after spending forty-three years in Texas. I was born in Detroit, Michigan. I'm a hundred percent disabled veteran and an Agent Orange survivor. My wife passed away three years ago. I was looking... I was looking to come back to Michigan. I found Flushing. What a wonderful community I walked into that I knew nothing about. One of the things that was most helpful to me was the senior center in Flushing. The director and the staff have been wonderful to me. Since I live alone, I eat lunch most of the time at the center. I sit at the table with five other gentlemen who are also widowers who have lost their We have a connection during that period of time where we talk, we share memories, and we have a good time. And by the way, the food is oftentimes very good. I would like for all the commissioners to look at the objectives that have been stated, requiring the millage and the situation regarding somewhat of an imbalance that has already been spoken to. I know without the senior center, I would be alone and isolated. It would not be good for my mental or physical condition. I have PTSD as well as other service ailments, and every bit of help that I can get during this period is extremely beneficial to me and others. I thank you very much for the time, and think about the rest of the veterans who participate in this program, because they need it just as much as I do. Thank you.
Thank you for your reflections, and thank you for your service to the country.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Lisa Monk, and I am here to not only represent one of the senior millage service providers, Alternative Elderly Care, that provides in-home personal care and homemaking services, but I'm also here to advocate for the seniors who can't be here. I have made it my life's work for the last 15 years. I started taking care of seniors in their homes at the age of 16 and made it a career at 17. I've sat on the Board of the Genesee County Commission on Aging. I'm a member of the Senior Directors Association. I sat on the Board of the Walk to End Alzheimer's. I think you get where I'm going. I've dedicated my life to helping seniors who are unable to advocate for themselves. I wish that I could bring 20 people with me to tell you about how not just our services, but the services Brooke touched on, the services Seth touched on last week with Legal Services, the Sheriff's Department, and the Elder Abuse Task Force. I wish they were here to tell you how impactful these services are in their lives. Unfortunately, that's why we have a job, is because they're unable to be here. Somebody has to stand up and advocate for them, and so that's what I am here doing today. The only other thing I wanted to bring before you, which you guys have all heard because it's in the legislative text, is in regards to the contract with one of the millage service providers in Genesee County that elaborates. The contract facilitates a range of services that directly contribute to the well-being and safety of seniors. By funding programs and services that promote health, safety, and high quality of life, the contract additionally supports the provision of free services to seniors that directly impact their financial well-being. By offering no-cost services, we can alleviate the financial burden on seniors to allow them to manage their resources better. By continuing partnerships with senior centers and service providers, the contracts foster an inclusive and collaborative culture. Moreover, the contracts contribute to community growth by expanding the reach and scope of services available to seniors. I am here to advocate every single day for the wonderful senior centers we have here in Genesee County, because we are so blessed, but I am also here to advocate for those who do not have a voice and that need millage service providers. Look at the statistics, not just that you've been provided with. I'm imploring, on behalf of a service provider, I would love to give you the statistics on the waitlist and the people needing services, which is why we have asked for additional funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, I am Yashika Albert of Valley Area Agency on Aging, and I too am here to advocate for those who cannot come out and speak before you all and before the congregation. I do want it to... There seems to be a little bit of confusion as to what millage pays for, because Valley Area Agency on Aging pays for congregate meals. That doesn't necessarily come out of the millage budget. There are lots of programs that are given in the senior centers that are not paid for by millage dollars. So I do, I too welcome an open book and looking at administrative costs and how much of money goes towards the actual service versus operations, because I can tell you, zero millage dollars goes towards my salary, zero millage dollars goes towards the CFO's salary, zero millage dollars goes towards the director's salary who oversees that staff. Ninety-six to ninety-eight percent of the millage dollars that we receive goes towards the direct service. The other 2% goes towards supplies. So yes, to my knowledge, I think the service providers are the only ones that go through a RFP process. I don't think senior centers have to go through an RFP process. So if they're trying to make everything even and do everything, have everybody on the same playing field, then perhaps we should look at that as well. So I do want to be clear, there is a place for senior centers. We advocate for senior centers. We have programs in senior centers. We push senior centers on our website and on our millage. But I don't want to make it seem as if there isn't a need for other programs and services in the community. There are people who cannot come out and speak. There are people who are homebound, who need meals, who need the people to bring the services to them. So yes, I welcome an open investigation of where all the dollars are going, specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to speak in this meeting, to address this body? Any additional speakers? Any additional speakers? All right, seeing no additional speakers, public speaking is now closed. Thank you all for your comments tonight. Seeing no... All right? All right, thank you. That brings us to our communications. The first communication before us is Resolution 2025-2121, approval of a resolution naming the Board of Commissioners Chamber in honor of Brian B.B. Noden. Before we proceed, all members of the commission have received a replacement resolution for this. I'd like to entertain a motion at this time to swap those resolutions, and this resolution will become Point 1, if you will. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Support.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Avery, supported by Commissioner Wayhill. Is there any discussion on swapping of the resolutions? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, the motion passes. Now we come to the resolution before us. I suggested some time ago, as I read this resolution, and then we'll have a special presentation, it was Dwight L. Moody who once sagaciously suggested, prior to his transition from this life, that he said to his family, he says, "Tomorrow you will hear that I've died, but do not believe them, for tomorrow I will be more alive than I've ever been before." He went on to say that "that which is born of flesh will one day pass away, but that which is born of spirit will live on forever." And it's for that cause that the Genesee County Board of Commissioners now entertain this resolution, a resolution naming the Board of Commissioners Chamber in honor of Brian B.B. Noden. Whereas Mr. Brian B.B. Noden was a man of integrity, compassion, and tireless advocate for his community, and whereas he led by example, directing 25 years of serving his community as a teacher in Flint, Michigan. And whereas Mr. Noden served with distinction on the Flint City Council from 2009 to 2014, including two years as Vice President and subsequently as a Genesee County Commissioner representing District 1, starting in the fall of 2014 until his untimely passing on December 7, 2022. And whereas Mr. Noden was driven by a passion for his community, dedicated, significant time, and effort as the volunteer director of Burston Field House and founder of Friends of Burston, to ensure it remain a vital community resource for the residents of District 1 and all of Genesee County. And whereas Mr. Noden actively served on numerous boards and organizations, including the Flint Institute of Arts, the Genesee County Land Bank, GST Michigan Works, and the Genesee County Health Board, among others. And whereas because Mr. Noden was a friend and beloved member of the community and a man who should be remembered forever for his unwavering commitment to public service, education, and making a positive impact for all residents of Flint and Genesee County, it is fitting that the Board of Commissioners ensures his legacy will live on in our community for generations to come. And whereas we hope these words will bring joy and solace to his wife, Jacqueline, daughters, Nikia, Lauren, Alexis, and Tiffany, his mother, Judith Noden, brothers Anthony Cobbins, Cory Noden, Chris Crane, and all his family and friends, reminding them of the indelible mark he left on our hearts and minds. And now therefore be it resolved that the Genesee County Board of Commissioners hereby names the Board of Commissioners Auditorium at 324 South Saginaw Street in Flint, Michigan, the Bryant B.B. Noden Auditorium, to commemorate his contributions and to serve as a lasting tribute to his legacy of public service. At this time, prior to us voting on this resolution and inviting his family up to have remarks as well, I'd like to, at this time, invite up his wife, Jacqueline Noden, his mother, Ms. Judith Noden, his mother-in-law, Ms. Louise Clark, and cousin Darlene DeShazier to come and stand at this time. And actually, we'll have you speak from there, and then we're gonna have you come around after we vote to do something very, very special. At this time, let's give a standing ovation and a hand clap for the Noden family.
I'm Judith Ann Noden. I'm Brian's mother. I am here on behalf of my entire family to thank you all for what you've done. This is quite an honor, and it's bringing so much joy to our family. So thank you all so very, very much. This is something we will just hold dear for the rest of our lives. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Darlene DeShazier. I'm Brian Noden's first cousin. And excuse me, because I do have tears in my eyes, because he was my little cousin. He was the one... If he was here, he would tell you. I was the one showed him how to fight. Okay? I told him, "Don't run from nobody. You gotta stand up for you." But basically, we want to thank everyone, because it is so dear to our hearts. So thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Noden's mother-in-law. He seemed more like a child of mine than a son-in-law. And I would just like to say something I know would make him laugh. He said, "Mom, how does she get so stingy?" But every time, I'd just be thinking about him, he'd pull up in the driveway. "Hey, Mom, I had a little look. Come here. I know that old stingy daughter of yours ain't gonna give you nothing." But he was dear to my heart. I knew him long before he knew my daughter, and we was very, very good friends. I miss him so much, but I don't miss him in sorrow. I miss him in joy.
It's me, that stingy daughter. Good afternoon, good evening, Commissioners. Life's most persistent question and most urgent question is, what are you doing for others? That was quoted by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. My husband answered that, because B.B. tried to help everyone he could, whether it was at the land bank, whether it was at Flint Community Schools, whether it was at Burston, whether it was just somebody on the street. For 11 years, he was a stand-in dance dad, because a little girl didn't have a dad to dance. For 11 years, he cut 55 lots on the north end of Flint. He loved this community. So it is with humbleness and it's with gratitude that we accept this honor, that you remember his service to this community. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and we want you all to know that we are eternally grateful for this honor. Thank you.
At this time, before we act on this resolution to take action on this, it's our custom to have discussion before. At this time, I'll open the floor for Commissioners to have remarks, starting with Commissioner James Avery.
Thank you. B.B. was a dear friend of mine, brother, fraternity brother. I apologize, I didn't expect that. This is right for him. Before this building was really constructed, B.B. and I would argue playfully about who was gonna get what office. And he had all these visions about what he could see down Saginaw Street, and this is definitely warranted to a man who really loves his community. I used to argue with him about you can't save everybody from going to jail, but he would try. Even if they were wrong, he still gave his all. I've been knowing his wife since I was probably nine or 10 years old. We grew up in church together, so I would tease him, but I knew his wife first, you know. Ms. Noden, dear friend, family. I'm honored and privileged to be able to carry on his legacy, not only in this capacity, but also with the capacity of Burston Field House, which was his vision. I don't take that for granted, and he was the reason why I... He urged me to run for the county commissioner, and I was thankful for that. I didn't want to, but he pushed me, and I'm thankful now that I am here. But I just want to say, you know, homage to my brother, to his family. I love you all, and yeah, thank you.
At this time, we'll start from the end, if there's anyone else who desires to speak on this.
Yeah. I don't think I would even be in this seat if it wasn't for B.B. It was through his insistence that I decided to run for this seat. But just, you know, just to let everyone know, the Noden family is my family. They're part of my extended family. Matter of fact, B.B. used to beat me at chess when he was eight years old. So I've been sort of like an uncle to B.B. His father and I were best friends. His mother and I were very good friends. We did a lot of things together. You know, he was my road dog. But this is, again, very fitting, you know, that we're remembering him and making a very sincere tribute to all of the work that he did on behalf of Flint and Genesee County. And I just want to, from my extended family, thank the Board of Commissioners for this honor. honor.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Commissioner Wayheal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first met BB in 2009, after I was elected, and he was elected, both for the first time to the Flint City Council, and became fast friends. I think there was no Christmas or no Thanksgiving between 2009 and when BB passed 2022, that I didn't get a text from him the morning of those holidays to say Merry Christmas or Happy Thanksgiving. He was dedicated to community, and I have, I have a story about that. So, on Flint City Council, we used to have to approve, I guess requisitions, they're called, maybe resolutions, to pay vendors. And frequently, we would be paying vendors who would do the fill, or the infill, for homes in, in all of our districts, but BB's too. And BB would drive out there after they did the fill, and BB would start digging around where they put the, the fill into the basement of the building, or the house, and he would find glass, and pop cans, and bolts, and nails, and whatnot. So, he started calling in the vendors who did the fill before, I think it was maybe my special affairs committee, or another committee, and he would grill them for half hour, 45 minutes, maybe an hour. And at some, at one point, they admitted that they weren't using the quality of fill that they should be for this community, and it was because BB kept it up. And so, that is one memory I have of him. And I'll just say that I was elected to the county commission for the first time in November of '22, went to the county commission meeting after that election, and walked across the auditorium and hugged BB, and said, "I'm looking forward to serving with you again," and that was the last time I saw him. So, I will just say that it is my great pleasure, it is my great pleasure to support this resolution in the naming of this auditorium in his honor, and, and I'll just say that I regret I was not able to serve with him again, but I am able to serve in a room with a body that honors his legacy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can't think of anyone more deserving of this honor. And I knew BB for a short time, and just began to understand what an impact he made on his community. Because I'm a smooth stepper, and I spent every Wednesday at Burston line dancing. And I remember BB coming in to our line dancing classes every week, he would greet us, he would tell us about things that were going on, he would just keep us informed. And, and we would reciprocate and support some of the things that he was doing too. And so, I was at Burston in my line dancing class when we got the news, and the room was so emotional, it was just, it transformed dancing into a really, really sad moment for all of us. And we all just gathered around and we started praying. And at that moment, it just amplified the meaning of what this man meant to our community. And so, that's why I just say that there is no one more deserving. I'm glad we can turn that painful moment into a moment of joy today. So, thank you.
Commissioner Cruzano.
I first met BB back in 2016, when I was first elected. BB had already been here for a bit, but it didn't take long for me to realize the impact that man had on his community, his passion. He just lit up whenever he started to talk about Burston. That was his passion, along with his mama and his wife, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But I can't think of another person that I, excuse me, James, you did this to me, I started crying. Anyways, that had, I have more respect for, for what he did, and what he accomplished in his community, bringing that building, Burston, back from where it was to what it is now. It was him and his family, but him, single-handedly bringing that back from the ashes of the junk heap of Flint, Michigan, making it into what it's being developed into now. I'd like to say that over those years of serving with BB in the past, we agreed on everything. Yeah, we didn't, but we got along fabulously, and we always took everything just one issue at a time, and forgot whatever the past argument was. He always talked very highly and respectfully of his mother, a lot, very often, and I want you to know that, Mrs. Noden. But when Jackie came on the scene, oh my goodness, you couldn't hold that boy back. And he was so enthused, and so caring and loving for Jackie. And I used to tease him, I says, "Well, when you gonna get married?" He says, "Well, I don't know, I'm thinking about it." And I kept pushing him and pushing him, and you know, it wasn't me that pushed him to make the decision, but when he finally did, I says, "Well, when you gonna invite me to the wedding? When you gonna invite me to the wedding?" And they ended up married without the big to-do, but the man loved you, Jackie. I want you to know that. I loved him, I respected him. Thank you.
Anyone additional desire to make words? All right. Well, at this time, at this time, if there's no additional discussion at this time, I'd be remiss if I did not say that what an honor it's been to, what an honor it's been to serve and continue work that BB Noden began, just as Commissioner James Avery. We met back just prior to him running for office to the Flint City Council. As many of you know, myself, Commissioner Wayheal, and Commissioner Noden, we served on the Flint City Council together, and many, many days of discussions about community. But even more than discussions about community, a lot of laughs, a lot of stories, and a lot of picking with one another. And our districts bordered each other, I had District One on the north end, he had District Three, and particularly Saginaw Street was a major border between us, and we would talk about how we were going to get people downtown to pay attention to our district, and how we would kind of double team people to try to get folks to consider resources, and so on and so forth. But what I will say is that, what an example Commissioner Noden set, set all across this community. And one of the things that I've shared before is, you know, my prayer and hope is that even in his transition, that he knew while he was on earth, how much he was respected, how much he was appreciated, and how much this community at large loved him. What a fitting tribute. If there's no additional discussion, we'll take a vote at this time, all in favor of naming the Board of Commissioners Chamber in honor of Bryant BB Noden, indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. This chamber is hereby named in honor of Commissioner Bryant BB Noden. At this time, I'd like to invite his family up, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Avery to present this resolution to the family, followed by the presentation of this, this resolution, then we'll take a picture here. You want to go up front? So we'll come up in the center here. All Commissioners, if you join us in the.
Board of Commissioners, to present this proclamation to you, dedicating to my friend, my brother, your husband, your son, son-in-law, and cousin. Definitely warranted to you all. In addition to, he has his 33rd Masonry that we have, and this is a very pointed time for you to receive that as well, in his memory.
At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll begin our, continue our order of business. Thank you.
...
All right, at this time, I'd like to call the, our meeting back to order at six-thirty-six. A little bit more, please. All right, next on our agenda, we have, under Communications, we have EP twenty-five-zero-zero-three, Emergency Purchase of a Maintenance Agreement with JAVS for courtroom video and audio recording equipment.
No action needed on these note. This is just for notification purposes.
Okay, okay.
Could we just have the next two, please, Mr. Chair, a little more explanation, and then maybe some questions answered afterwards?
All right, so we can begin with number two. Are there any questions about item number two on the communications?
I would like to know what was purchased, why it was an emergency purchase, a little more on that.
Check one.
I don't, yeah.
I was asking if we knew why it was an emergency purchase, and I wanted to know a little more about it.
I don't know that anybody's here from the court, but this is the system that's used, required by the state. I'm not sure what the delay was on it, but I can get that answer for you from the court administrator.
If we could, please.
All right, thank you. No additional questions on item number two. We'll move on to item number three, EP twenty-five-zero-zero-four, Emergency Purchase Order BSNA in an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. No sense to provide. For the annual software maintenance charge, the cost for this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed. An emergency purchase request has been made due to the timing of the invoice arrival, due date, and board meetings not allowing the item to move through full board approval before the due date. So it's a timing challenge here that's beyond the control of our regular schedule. Commissioner Shoemaker for discussion.
Do we have a contract for this?
Crystal can speak to this. Want to make sure she gets up and talk. Her mom's here with her tonight, so.
Crystal, you want to introduce your mom or anything?
My mom, Diana Haynes, watches the meetings every week, so she wanted to come down and see the new building, so we moved up so she could have closer to her front row seat.
Thank you for joining us. We're super proud and glad to have your daughter. She does an awesome job.
So, in two thousand twenty, we decided to go live with BSNA. We are mandated by the state to use it for equalization and tax. This brought it into one software. It did save us about thirty thousand dollars, switching from the old module that we were using that provided only two of the modules that we have. Under this fifty-seven thousand, we have added four additional modules that we use under our financing. I'm not sure why it took so long to get to us. I think it floated around in the building. I have contacted the vendor and made sure they send it to our suite, and as well as email a copy of it to us. So we don't have a signed contract. We had a year-to-year renewal, and previously it's come to you before this timing. However, I don't know, it was just lost in the building and came to me late, so.
See, that's where, as a board, I tend to take exception to this because we still met every month, so it should have got to us a month at least in advance because if we would have debated, had discussion, or said we're going to send it out for some type of bid process if there was another provider or anything else like that. So I take a little exception to the fact to the board not meeting. We meet every month in the summer, and if it was sent to us far enough in advance, which they always should be more than a month in advance, any of these contracts we're entering into, and I've talked about for six years when I've been down here, that we need to do that. That's what I'm, like I said, I'm...
I received this the first week of August, so...
So this is a vendor issue, then?
Yes. Well, no, I think it was in the building. It comes to the mailroom, and I think it somehow got shuffled, and somebody didn't know what to do with it. Eventually, someone came up and said, "Is this you?" I said, "Yes, that's ours." I also put a calendar reminder in my Outlook calendar to look for it next year ahead of time, to make sure we get it in sooner, and communicated with the vendor as well to make sure that we get it, a, email and mailed, but that it goes to the correct suite number as well.
If I may. So they weren't using email to send this out?
We no.
Wow. And they're a software company?
Now they are, yes. We opted into the paperless.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. I appreciate it.
Typically, for ERP, that's not something that we send out every year. The ERP is usually something that you select, and then at some point, if you decide you want to change it up and go with something else, then we would send that out to bid. That's how we've done it traditionally.
Thank you. And it's also great to see your mother again. She met me at Sam's Club, so, yep, so it was very nice.
She recognized you from TV.
She's super friendly, super nice. I told you, a wonderful mother, and you have a wonderful daughter, by the way.
And just one BB thought, as I was looking at the agenda, I really remember him saying, "Move it," before anybody would finish reading, and my mom would say, "Does someone get something special for being the first one to move something?" And I said, "No, he just really likes to do that."
All right, thank you. Any additional questions or discussion about this communication? All right, seeing none, we move on to communication number four, EP twenty-five-zero-zero-six, Emergency Request to Expend Round Three Contract Amendment between the Valley Area Agency on Aging and Genesee County for the home-delivered and congregate meal programs for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Commissioner Wayhill.
Mr. Chair, I wonder if we might have Director Coleman, I know she's here, come and talk about this?
Thank you.
I think it's particularly timely, given the senior center and the senior services conversations we've been having.
Good evening, Pamela Coleman, Director for G Card. This emergency request is due to last month, we brought before you, and you approved the acceptance of round three from Valley, but we failed in the request to ask to expend it. So we wanted to make sure that we got it on record, authorization from this board to expend the grant dollars as well as apply them to a purchase order detailing how the dollars will be spent.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Shoemaker?
We don't need to take action on that. Normally, we approve the expenditure of items. That's just...
No, they made it as an emergency purchase, and then the purchasing ordinance requires to notify this board of an emergency purchase.
We're going to have to discuss what is justified as a emergency purchase, though, because this could get, not that this is an abuse of it, but this could get abused. You know, very easily, you know, this emergency purchase policy we have, so. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Coleman. So just to clarify, the original resolution lacked the piece about the spending authorization, and so that's what was rectified in the emergency?
It was twofold. We received, with this request, we are receiving authorization to spend the dollars, and also to allocate a portion of this funding to a particular purchase order that will allow us to make sure that our expenditures align with the revenue. Due to the lateness of the year, it was categorized as emergency, so that we would make sure at the end of next month, we wouldn't have any issues, not admitting invoices, but also having them paid out before September thirtieth.
All right, thank you on that. And then, just an overall question about what these dollars purchase, and they're congregate meals and home-delivered meals, is that...
That's correct. These dollars will be applied toward food and regular supplies that we use in the kitchen for...
Okay. And given the interest there is in the senior services and how these are supplied, and who pays for them, tell us where these dollars, are these millage dollars, or are they from elsewhere?
These, gonna get a little convoluted. These, this particular increase from Valley will go towards the Valley portion of the congregate meals. So it'll be some of the food and supplies, and then there is a portion that will go, the food purchase for some of the home-delivered meals, but it will, it's going to like backfill where you all approved to give us the hundred thousand dollars that the Office of Senior Services applied for, so that we didn't have to use all of those dollars. Once we got the additional monies from Valley, we're going to back or replace some of those, some of those dollars, so that we didn't have to tap into those funds, because they were supposed to be as needed. That, I'm sorry, it's a little convoluted, but the way that it's applied, it's moving money around to cover the cost of food and supplies.
Okay. And then, the congregate meals are served in the senior centers. Is that correct? Are they served elsewhere as well, in addition to senior centers, or just senior centers, the congregate meals that we do in the county?
Just the senior centers.
Just the senior centers.
Yes, sir.
And then, the home-delivered meals are obviously taken straight to people's homes.
That's correct.
And so, I think it's important to note, probably just for educational purposes for the commission and the public, that when there's a congregate meal in a senior center, it's paid for, it's not part of the senior center's budget. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So even though it takes place there, it's a natural spot, given what we heard about the value of congregating, which is why they're called congregate meals. But I think it's also notable that even though the service takes place there, it's not part of the allocation that they received. Is that right?
That's correct. So those are completely separate dollars that we receive as one of the other vendors, to make sure that as they congregate, they have meals to enjoy as part of that congregation piece.
Right, okay. Thank you, Dr., or Director Coleman. Thank you.
Take it.
Any additional comments, any additional discussion on this? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Coleman. All right, so that was EP two-five-zero-zero-six. Before we proceed, we have one additional communication to be, we'll entertain a motion to add it to the agenda as a communication. It's not necessary for us to do it, but let's add it to the agenda, and then we'll vote to accept it if that's the board's pleasure. So it's a communication from, from Tim W. Elkins, Genesee County Road Commission Commissioner, dated June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, addressed to Mr. Chris Gueranger, chairperson of the Genesee County Road Commissioner, and it is, or maybe I should read the whole communication. Dear Chris Gueranger, I am writing and formally resigning from my position as Commissioner for the GCRC effective July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The decision was not an easy, not easy, and took a lot of consideration. Due to changes in my personal life, I'm not able to commit the time needed like I have in the past four and a half years. I am grateful for the opportunities to have been a part of, help improve operations, realign organization structure, reduce costs of benefits while improving benefits, and enhance services and programs for townships. I have enjoyed working with the GCRC board members, administration, and appreciate the opportunity to offer guidance as chairperson the past three and a half years. I look forward to staying in touch, and I wish the GCRC continued success. Sincerely, Timothy W. Elkins. Actually, I won't, we won't take a rea-
I move that we add it to the agenda.
All right. All right, it's been moved to support to add it to the agenda. Any discussion on adding it to the agenda? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. All opposed, nay. All right, motion passes. Now, Chair, entertain a motion to accept.
I move to accept the resignation.
Support.
All right. Been moved to accept the resignation by Commissioner Cousinell, supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. All opposed, nay. All right, motion passes. Communication is accepted. Commissioner Shoemaker.
I would like to bring forth a resolution to send a letter to the Road Commission Chair and Director, requesting that when we receive such notifications, that they immediately notify us and send it to the board chair and the board administrator and corporation counsel. This is from June twenty-fifth. We could have put the process in place. We knew we were going to be lacking a road commissioner. As soon as July thirtieth, we could have sent it out, put the notifications, and had somebody in place. Now, we've got a process. We're going to take at least sixty days to put someone in place, and we're already a month beyond July thirtieth. So I would like to put forth a resolution requesting that they, from this point forward, send them a letter stating that they send us the notification ASAP within, I don't know, I shouldn't say ASAP, let's be more...
You want to make a motion from the floor to do that, to add it to the agenda?
I would like to add that to the agenda.
I'll support it.
All right. Motion has been made and supported, as stated. It's been moved by Commissioner Cousinell, Commissioner Shoemaker, and supported by Commissioner Cousinell. Is there any discussion on adding it to the agenda?
The motion is...
Yeah. So actually, as you're stating it, we don't need to add it to the agenda. If the board adopts what you have requested, then it will become policy. Our staff will put the policy and bring it, the final wording, to government operations, and then we'll bring it through. But by this vote, it'll be triggered, okay? All right, is there any discussion on the motion that's been made?
Just, I don't know if it's government ops or public works, but figure it out.
We'll figure it out. All right?
Or appointments.
Or appointments. We'll figure it out. Okay, any additional discussion? Right. I'm a person of responsibility, and I apologize to this board and that responsibility, going back, looking at emails today when some questions arose on this. A communication did come into our office. There was some confusion about who sent it to the board or not, but there's also another piece about how letters should come to us from individuals who resigned from different places. So this is a ball that got dropped, that was dropped. I take responsibility for it as Chair, and we'll make sure that there's clear process and more rapid communication going forward. Additionally, through, I guess, this board to our office, I think we should also send the Road Commission the process for resignations as well, just to make sure that there's clear process and that all laws are being followed as well. All right? Any additional comments or questions? All right, so we're voting on his request, as he stated, to have communications come to us in that way. If there's no further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. All opposed, nay. All right, motion passes. All right, so that brings us to the end of our communications. Now, we have before us our appointments. The first appointment before is Resolution twenty-two-five-two-one-three-two, Approval to Reappoint Commissioner Charles Winfrey to the Genesee Health Systems General, you know, they just talked to us about that.
Listen, BB could have a record meeting. Let me just put it that way. They'd be happy and out of here before you'd know it.
We apologize, Crystal's mother. Okay, okay. Approval to reappoint Commissioner Charles Winfrey to Genesee Health System General Member Seat with the term expiring March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. It's been moved by who? Who moved it?
Shoemaker.
Shoemaker, who supported it?
Getzinger.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, motion passes. Now, we have before us three appointments for the Genesee Health System General Member. They are general member seats for three-year terms expiring March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. As we know, we vote by rounds, various rounds. The clerk will call a name, and we will, Commissioner Wayhill.
So, Mr. Chair, and maybe Commissioner Shoemaker was going to weigh in, given his role, but I think what we did previously was move, the chair moved them all, and then someone supported it. So all the names were before us in that sense, all nominated, I guess. And then, we started, I think, the first district and went around to all nine and named a name. In this case, we'll have to do that three different votes. So I just wanted to offer that to be helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Wayhill. At this time, I'll defer to our Appointments Committee Chair to, again, state what we are voting on and to put all of the names into nomination.
Well, I will move Resolution twenty-two-five-twenty-one-twenty-five, and I would like to nominate all the, all eleven applicants to this process.
Support. All right, been moved, supported by Appointments Committee Chair Shoemaker.
We don't need to vote on that, and it doesn't need support, just a nomination.
Okay, okay, all right. All right.
So this will be for seat one?
Yes, yes, this will be for seat one. Actually, I think we did vote, did we vote previously? Excuse me, just a point of clarification. Did we vote to, because I just want to make sure the process is consistent. Did we vote to add them in the nominations once? He mentioned them before?
Nominations may come from the floor and do not need to be seconded. However, only those people nominated shall be considered for...
Thank you for the clarity. All right. So all names stand nominated. At this time, we'll go to our clerk to begin first round voting for the first seat on the Genesee Health System.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Chia Morgan.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Ellen Ellenberg.
Commissioner Getzinger?
I'm going to pass.
Commissioner Brown?
Ellen Ellenberg.
Commissioner Avery?
Ellen Ellenberg.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Crystal Alexander.
Commissioner Cousinell?
Ellenberg.
And Commissioner Wayhill?
Chia Morgan. Commissioner Getzinger.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Commissioner Getzinger. Getzinger needs to vote now?
Oh, Commissioner Getzinger.
Do I have to vote for somebody?
Ellen Ellenberg.
All right.
Five votes for Ellenberg.
All right. So Ellen Ellenberg is appointed to the first seat on the Genesee Health Systems Board. Now we move on for voting for the second of three seats. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Chia Morgan.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Dr. Angela Reeves.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Dr. Angela Reeves.
Commissioner Brown.
Dr. Angela Reeves.
Commissioner Avery.
Dr. Angela Reeves.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Crystal Alexander.
Commissioner Cuzno.
Alexander.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Morgan.
So at the end of that round, typically you would go to the top two, but because there was a tie, it'll be the top three. So Reeves, Alexander, and Morgan would go to round two.
So in round two, this is the second of the three seats that we'll be voting on. Nobody achieved the five votes in that round.
Is there a point for any discussion before we continue on?
Sure, if you like.
I wanted to thank our staff, if you guys had it, obviously, for the map to show where current commissioners are going to actually, or the commissioners who are already on the board are positioned throughout our county. I would encourage everyone that the county is very large, and that if you notice, we've got a pocket here to the middle and the, into the east, but the rest of it, if you look at it, is very barren. You know, these districts get to elect commissioners, but it's amazing, we come down here, how we're really focused on just one area. And we've talked about this for years. We've talked about making sure the Out County has a vote, and we have some residents that are in the Out County. So if, before you vote, maybe you might think of that, this next round or the next two rounds, to actually spread this out. So people are, we're hearing voices from other parts of the community other than Flint, Burton, and Grand Blank Township. You know, this might be a, might be a plus. So just to think about it, we did have this made, Dr. Brown brought up the other day that hadn't been. Thank you for that. And so, you know, I think we should start considering those things. I always have, since I've been down here. I think that's one thing Commissioner Cuzno and I have always agreed upon, that the Out County, if you talk to them, and I know we all are insulated in our own little districts, but they feel they get very little voice. Because even though they can elect me or Commissioner Cuzno, guess what? It's still, there's two commissioners that are in the city of Flint, others tying to the city of Flint, and they feel like they're not getting that heard. And we have users of these systems all over the, all over the county. And for example, we're going to pass one, Flint has a unique user, and they have other users. So just, I'm throwing out there as you vote, not to change your mind, tell you what to do, but there are others out there who live in different areas who might provide different perspectives. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to continue with that conversation. Since 2016, I have tried to make this appointment process different than what it has been. Commissioner Shoemaker and I, we've been very adamant that the county as a whole includes the whole county. It doesn't just include one area. And my area in particular, if you take this map, there's nobody across the northern part of the county. And you could take just about every board, I think every board. I have no one. And when I do get one, or I do ask for one, I get a lot of pushback, and that goes back to boards since 2016. And even recently, I had a very highly qualified person on a board that I've sat on all these years, and he was removed because of the prerogative of the Chair and his buddy. I have a problem with what's going on down here. I didn't want to make a big deal out of this tonight, but Mr. Shoemaker brought it up. But in the future, from here on out, I will only be voting for a few people that live outside of my district, that I happen to know and are very good about it. But I will not be voting for anybody that does not live in my district from here on out. Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
Just for clarity, is there indications about the locations of these names versus what we, who we should just-
On their applicants, obviously, it showed where they lived, but, I mean, most, most for Flint, there's three from Davison, two from Grand Blank, one from Mount Morris Township. Crystal Alexander is from Mount Morris Township. I know Marty was-
No, she's, well, she was from Thedford, but she might be in Mount Morris. I don't know exactly where she lives now.
She might be in the city, I don't, but it's on there.
Just ask if we wanted to have that on there for our reference.
We could, we can, we can put that moving forward from that standpoint.
Additional discussion? Commissioner Dr. Brown.
I want to thank Josh for putting together this map for us of geographic location for the candidates, but I also, it seems as if we have identified three people for moving into our next round of votes, but I don't know where those three people live, and I would echo what, you know, has been said already about having just a simple spreadsheet with the names, their location, and then the incumbents. I like to know their attendance record too, because I think that's important. We need people who are engaged, not there just in name only. And so, that said, we don't know, does anybody know where those three people live?
Yeah. I know where Angela Reeves lives in Davison Township. Chia Morgan is in Flint, city of Flint. Who was the other one?
Alexander.
Alexander. Are we trying to talk about that? She lives in Thedford. Her mailing address will be Mount Morris.
Well, none of those, can I just continue? None of those people live in my district, but I think I will speak, I mean, there is, I will speak on behalf of a commissioner who's not here. No, I'm not going to speak on his behalf, but just note that Commissioner Fuehelen is not here. He may be speaking for his district, which I see on the map, there's nobody represented from that area either. So Dr. Angela Reeves might be a good addition, just as a note.
Yeah.
Yeah. Dr. Angela Reeves is an incumbent.
Yeah. Any additional discussion? I'd like to get in here.
I would just like to add, if this board remembers, this body remembers, we did ask for attendance when we did the last one, that we have the attendance. I know that was worked on.
It's included in the-
It's in the second email you sent. So those items are there for people who have participated. The issue we've tried to get to with this, I'm a little different than Commissioner Cuzno on this, because there are various appointments that are made by the Chair, and when you elect a Chair, those are just part of what you get. But when it's this body, in my opinion, we need to definitely think about spreading out. We also need to think about boards that we want new ideas on, or changes on, and we, it needs to be part of our strategy when we put an agenda together for our year of what we wish to achieve during these workshops. But I appreciate the staff working on it. I am still, is, this is not a perfect process. I still, there's things I would like to do, and I talked to Dr. Brown about it the other day. The process we had before is the Appointment Committee would actually vet and qualify candidates a little more and narrow it down to more of what we felt the board fit the board's needs and wants after having conversation. And then we would interview the top candidates to discuss, and anyone could have voted on anyone they wanted, but we had a Chair that didn't like that policy, and we went in another direction. You can all, you know, obviously, call, interview any of these people. What's wonderful is, guess what? Look at the list we have compared to what we had before. We would have one candid, I'd say to Josh, that, do we post this? And Josh would say to me, we posted it, and that's all we got. Now, look where we are. So we're making progress. I think we're going to have to continue to do this, but we've also got to have, you know, some direction, I think, as a board of what we're looking for when we make these appointments to these boards, where we're looking to go. This is not an Appointment Committee issue thing. This is a board issue of what we're looking for, if we really are committed to representing the whole county as a whole and getting those outskirts. And maybe we do, as an Appointment Committee, focus more on making sure we're getting that message out there too. And maybe that's on me as the Chair, and I will take that up with Mr. Freeman to make sure we're trying to get more applicants from those Out Counties also.
Yes. I'd like to get in on this discussion. Couple things. One is that Dr. Reeves is someone, there are three seats, so she's someone that I'm intending to support before we're done voting here tonight. I think she's a great candidate, and she's one of the candidates that I've identified. So although I do agree with sport, you know, kind of spreading around appointments throughout the county, but for me as one commissioner, it doesn't take away from all commissioners' right and ability to support whoever they think is the best for the role regardless of where they live. And certainly, I've supported appointments throughout the county in different areas in the county, and so on and so forth. But although, you know, spreading out the appointments on a particular board throughout the county is the preference of individual commissioners, which is fine, it's not the absolute process. The prerogative of each commissioner to support whoever they think is best for that appointment or desires to serve, ultimately, that's who receives appointment. I am open to, you know, any commissioner on the board who feels like, you know, you don't have representation in your district, if there are candidates that come up that you support, that live in your district, just know, as I'm sure the full board is, I'm open to conversation about those, and I'm also open to being supportive, as I am if individuals approach me about appointments. With the run of these appointments, nobody's approached me about any of the appointments that are before us today, and so that's what I'm supporting. The other piece I will speak to is that relative to the Parks Commission, and one of my colleagues spoke of a person being removed by me and one of my buddies. I'm not sure who the buddy is, but what I will say is this, is that there are some appointments that are made by the Genesee County Board of Commissioners as a whole. There are, there's another category of appointments that are recommended by the Chair, and they have to be approved by the board. And then there are other appointments that the Chair has the ability to make without the approval of the board. The Parks Commission is one of those commissions. And so just to be clear, when those positions were presented to me, they were presented to me as vacant positions that I had a responsibility to appoint people to. And I did not make those appointments immediately. I did not make those appointments until about five months into my chairmanship. And when those appointments were made, there were new names appointed to those roles. Unbeknownst to me, there were individuals serving in spots that, it was my understanding that they were vacant. Doesn't mean that they aren't great people. Really, it was a kind of a flaw in the process, and we're working to make the process better. But what I will suggest is that every Chair of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, including those on this board who have served as Genesee County Chairpersons, have made appointments to the Planning Commission and remove commissioners at their pleasure, as they had the right to do that. So I just want to be clear, because it was said, this Chair did not inappropriately remove anybody, did not have an axe to grind with anybody. These positions, or the four positions, including one that my colleague spoke of, were presented to me as vacant positions requiring appointment, and I appointed those, including some people we know. Deb Cherry, our former treasurer, was one of those appointments, a great appointment. There were also other individuals that are working hard in community who desire an opportunity to serve, and we believe that, and I believe that they will serve well, and they deserve an opportunity to serve, just as I was given an opportunity to serve on this board before being elected. So that's not a jab at anybody, but because it was mentioned, I have a right and responsibility to clarify that to the public. And so I just want to bring that clarity. Commissioner Cuzno.
It's not that I want to get into an argument, it's just a point of clarification. It was not the Parks, it was the Metropolitan Planning, and all four people that were on the board were willing to serve, continue to serve.
All right.
So they were not vacant spots, is alls I'm saying.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that, and that was clarified for us after appointments made. What I will say is, in our, person from our office in conclusion, is that in the five months prior to me making the selections, our office, including Mr. Freeman and myself, received no communications from the incumbents in those positions requesting, well, they didn't come to me. Did they come to you? And they did not come to me. So Mr. Freeman said he didn't. So be the-
They submitted resumes, I know, because I asked them to, and they did, and I know they did.
Yeah, I didn't receive them. And so, so just to be clear, you know, you know, just to be clear, there are times where there's miscommunication, there are times where there's no communication, there's times where communications don't get to all of the, all of the right people. In this case, there wasn't clear and consistent communication. Again, I didn't receive those requests. I didn't receive requests from commissioners to reappoint people, and so I feel positions that were communicated to me by our office as vacant positions. So I just want to clarify that, not a jab at anybody, but because it was raised, it's appropriate that I clarify my actions as Chair to the public who is in this room and those who are listening. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to encourage us, and I'm happy that we have made strides with this appointment process, and we have so many excellent people to choose from for appointments. So kudos to the committee for revising that, making awareness to the whole county for, so we do have more applications. I would contend that the process still needs improvement, and I would like for us to engage in continuous improvement so that things don't fall through the cracks. I was a little surprised and taken aback to walk into a Planning Commission meeting and see four brand-new faces that I had not seen before, and, you know, I was really disappointed that, you know, that notification didn't come. So I'm just saying that there needs to be continuous improvement. We need to really look at an entire list of all the appointments, when they're coming up, and so that proper notifications are made, postings are done properly, and, and all of that.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Shoemaker.
The appointments were nothing to do with the Appointment Committee. Those were strictly for the Chair. Those were not us. We didn't vote on them, we didn't take. There are certain appointments he will make that will come in front of the Appointment Committee and will have conversations, and those have been brought to you. But the ones that are strictly Chair appointments, like in the past, and I've been here for six and a half years, they were never brought to me. No one ever made me aware where the various Chairs were there, and they made their appointments or they made changes. That is the Chair's prerogative. If I was the Chair, I'd do, I would make changes too. I'm not, I don't agree with all of them, but guess what? I'm not the Chair. Okay? But to be clear, those were nothing to do with the Appointment Committee, because Mr. Winfrey and I, we were made aware that they were there, we had our Appointment Committee meetings, but that's not, that's our, that's not, that's not part of what we discussed because those are up to the Chair. And the next, if we have another Chair, guess what, when those appointments come, Charles and I, we're not going to have anything to do with those also. So, or whoever is on the Appointment Committee that's appointed by the Chair. So just to be clear on those, they've been brought to this board.
Commissioner Cuzno.
I think we should change the bylaws.
Any other discussion? Let me say this. Commissioner Cuzno, you've served as the Chair of this board, and when you served as the Chair, the record reflects that you made appointments to the same board and replaced positions. That's not a jab, that's a fact, and it was your prerogative. But it seems that when I make the appointments that I desire, regardless of how the appointment's made, there's a concern of you and Dr. Brown about the appointments that I made. And I think that, just to be honest, because I've been very gracious with you both, you, appointing you as Finance Chair, appointing you as the Chair of Economic Development Committee. You didn't support me as Chair, you didn't have to. And I've been, I've been over and beyond gracious to you both, but it's not by happenstance that you two have the concerns tonight about a decision I made as Chair. It's really unfortunate, and I wish that the politics, the- It's, it's really unfortunate and I wish that the politics, the game playing, the jabbing, the, the taking shots at decisions I make as chair. I wish it stopped because I don't even do business that way and I think we're above that as a board. Yes, I made the appointments and now we want to change the bylaws because you two don't like the appointments that I made and you made changes to it as well? Let's stop the game plan and just handle the business of the people. Everybody on this board can see it, the public can see it, the staff can see it. Anything I bring to this board, it's a challenge for the two of you. I don't have a problem with that, but don't blast me in public as if I did something wrong. When Commissioner Kuzno, you did the same thing and had a right to do it. You had, you had a right to do it, when you were the chairperson.
Chairman, I call for the order of the day.
Thank you, sir. So now we have before us the last two appointments for GH, go ahead.
Yep, we're in round two of the second seat and the nominees are Reeves, Alexander and Morgan.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might. For the folks that indicated, I think Dr. Brown was one that attendance matters, you might want to take a look at the attendance for the folks for this round. The person who got the most votes has the worst attendance for the past two years.
Who, who is the individual?
I'm not going to say the name.
Okay, okay, all right, got it. All right, so we have, we're at the second seat and all three names that were mentioned, Chia Morgan, Reeves and what's the other name? Alexander, they all make it to the next round, roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Dr. Angela Reeves.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Crystal Alexander.
Commissioner Brown.
I can't change a name, can I?
You can, this is a fresh round, you can.
Fresh?
Yes.
Okay, Scott Hines.
Oh, no, you can't do it that way.
Oh, oh, no, no, you can't, I'm sorry. This is the three, the three, the three made it to the last round, sorry about that. So, so it's Alexander, Reeves or Morgan?
Um, I'll go with Morgan.
Commissioner Avery.
Morgan.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Alexander.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Alexander.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Morgan.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Morgan.
Four votes for Morgan, three votes for Reeves.
So for the next round, those are the two names that we're able to vote for, all right, roll Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a rebuttal to what Commissioner Wayhill had mentioned. I serve on the Genesee Health System Board with Dr. Angela Reeves. I don't know where he's getting his data from, but she has very good attendance.
It was sent to us by Mr. Freeman via email on Monday.
Josh, this is from GHS.
From GHS, their records, I, I just know what GH, GHS sent to us.
I don't know if they're keeping accurate records or what, but you know, to my knowledge, she, she has very good attendance.
Well, I, I think that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker.
The whole point is we asked for this to see who, and we started this four, five years ago with Commissioner Kuzno and I. We wanted to see these things, we were appointing people who weren't showing. They take record, they take roll call, if you're here, you're not here. The whole point is we want to put better candidates on these boards, people who care, people who show and if you're not showing. You know, and it is the accurate record, I think you disputed if, when they, they read the meeting, next meeting agenda and they're showing. Hey, you know what, I'm approving the minutes from the last meeting, I was absent and I was here, you'd want to state that you were here. So I, Josh went to the trouble of doing this because we've asked him to. My frustration is if you're going to ignore it, why ask him to do it? Why ask for these policies, why sit there and ask for these policies if you're going to ignore it? And I get frustrated with it because the, we had a good system working years ago, it worked well, it got sidestepped. We go through the trouble, we make our staff go through the exercise of doing this, which he, Josh has things to do, our staff has other things to do, we ask him to do it. And then we just ignore what the findings are. I think most of residents would be very upset to find out you put somebody on a board who's not showing. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just, I don't think GHS has falsified documents, so I'll stop at that.
So, so, so a couple of things, just so we can reset, so we just had a round of votes, there were two candidates that made it through.
He had three votes, he had three votes for Alexander.
Three votes for Alexander.
Four for Morgan, three for Alexander and one for Reeves.
One for Reeves, so the two people who made it through according to our policy is Morgan.
And Alexander.
And Alexander, so on this round, the only two individuals that are available for us to select is Morgan and Alexander. With that said, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Alex, Crystal Alexander.
Commissioner Brown.
Chia Morgan.
Commissioner Avery.
Morgan.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Crystal Alexander.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Alexander.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Morgan.
Commissioner Lloyd.
A Morgan.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Alexander.
It's tied.
Four, 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 all right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Brown.
Morgan.
Commissioner Avery.
Morgan.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Alexander.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Alexander.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Morgan.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Morgan.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Alexander.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Alexander.
Did it tie again? So my suggestion to, to move the train would be to maybe table this appointment until our next meeting, we've done that before. I think that's a productive path forward if you all agree. And actually, that's a good suggestion, let's postpone both appointments until our next meeting, when is it?
The 10th.
Our, our next regularly scheduled meeting, all right?
Mr. Chair, may I just ask if, Josh, you're the contact with GHS and the other organizations that give the attendance records. If you would just reach out and double check, and when I made the statement, I'm basing it on what we've been given.
And, and just to be fair, if any of the candidates have served on any other board or commission, to also get their attendance. From those boards or commissions.
Appointment, boards or commissions of the counties?
Yes.
I think that's fair and I, I want to add, so my, what I said, how I started my comment about the attendance was for those that want to factor this in. I'm not necessarily one of those because I was, I have Angela Reeves circled here and she was going to be my number one on the third round. Because I know her from Mac College quite well and I know that sometime, you know, assuming this is correct. Sometimes, you know, family things happen, there's, there's sickness and whatnot and it affects your attendance. Or you're just occupied with some other priority. So I just wanted to point out for those of, for those that want to make that a major factor, we have it in front of us, assuming it's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we're moving beyond, why don't we, let's take a vote to postpone these, Resolution 2025, 2125, it'll be for the two appointments.
Seat two and seat three.
Seat two and seat three are entertain a motion to postpone. To our next regularly scheduled meeting, motion made by Commissioner Dr. Brown, supported by Commissioner Avery. Is there any discussion on the postponement, seeing all in favor and the committee saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, all right, motion carries. I want to defer to our appointments chair for the next appointment.
Resolution 2025, 2126, approval of one appointment to Genesee Health System Primary Consumer Seat for partial term expiring 3/31/2026. Leslie Mitchell.
So, oh, support isn't needed, so because it's only one appointment, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Leslie Mitchell to this. To the Genesee Health System Primary Consumer Seat if there's no objection.
Support.
So, just point of process, if someone wanted to add someone though, I think we still need to do the, continue with the round robin with the name. Because if somebody wanted to add someone, they have the right to add them with the other board we did.
Ten speaks of voting.
One second, please.
I think there was a time to submit your application, Sean.
Huh?
I think there was a time set to set your application, that's been our process in the past.
It had been, but we discussed.
Use the, use the mic, please, for.
I'm sorry, that, that, that had been the process, but I was, Josh and I have also discussed the fact with Corporation Council, I believe in the past. That anyone can bring up any name they want from the floor and nominate them even though we have this process.
I see what you're saying.
Do you see what I'm saying, so if, if someone disagreed with the person that was on here and they, they had someone else, they still, and that was the problem we had. Remember, we had our committee people were frustrated because we determined these are the people we nominated and they couldn't name anyone else they, they'd wanted. So I believe maybe we should ask Corporation Council to look a little deeper into that and make sure, once we've made the motion, that people cannot bring.
Will you, will you read the relevant section on the.
Section nine of the policy speaks to nominations, it says, during the meeting of this board, following along the meeting agenda, commissioners will discuss. The appointed positions that have expired or become vacant, nominations will be taken for each position. Nominations may come from the floor and do not need to be seconded, however, those people nominated shall be considered, only those people nominated shall be considered for appointment. I think to Commissioner Shoemaker's point, he's saying that this person should be nominated. And then since there's only one, Rule 10 would come into play where if there is only one applicant or only one nominated, the roll call vote may be suspended and a voice vote can take place. So I think he's, I don't want to put words in your mouth, you just need to nominate Mitchell.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, yes.
So what's, how you like to proceed?
Which I did, but I would also let Corporation Council to look in to make sure we're doing this correctly.
Okay, so, so what if we postpone this one to the next meeting?
I think we're fine with moving it forward the way we are, I think we are right, but I just want to confirm again.
Okay, all right, so at this time, we have the one appointment before us or the one person who's been nominated, Leslie Mitchell. At this time, roll.
Voice, voice, vote.
So all in favor of appointing Leslie Mitchell to the Genesee Health System Primary Consumer Seat, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion carries.
Resolution 2025, 2127, approval of one appointment to Genesee County Land Bank for the City of Flint resident seat for the term expiring 9/30/28. I move both candidates.
All right, so both candidates have been moved, at this time Timothy J. Brooks and Jalisa Blair are those individuals nominated. At this time, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Timothy Brooks.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Timothy Brooks.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Jalisa Blair.
Commissioner Brown.
Brooks.
Commissioner Avery. Commissioner Shoemaker.
Brooks.
Commissioner Kuzno.
I don't have anybody.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Brooks.
What was the count? I know, what, I know who won, but will you state the count, the record?
Six Brooks, one Blair and one no vote.
All right, thank you, Jalisa, Timothy Brooks has been appointed to this particular seat, Mr. Shoemaker.
Resolution 2025, 2128, approval of one appointment to the Genesee County Land Bank for an out county, non-City of Flint resident seat. For the term expiring 9/30/2027.
All right. So nominations have been made and roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Patrick, Patricia Lockwood, my apologies.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Patricia Lockwood.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Patricia Lockwood.
Commissioner Brown.
Lockwood.
Commissioner Avery.
Lockwood.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Pat Lockwood.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Lockwood.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Lockwood.
Eight votes for Lockwood.
All right, she stands appointment, appointed, thank you, that brings us to the end of our appointments. Now we have before us our standing committees, Community and Economic Development, Doctor, Commissioner Dr. Beverly Brown, Chairperson Dale Wayhill, Commissioner Vice Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2025, 2052, approval of a pass through agreement between the Genesee County Metropolitan Planning Commission and the Mass Transportation Authority.
Support.
All right, been moved and supported by Commissioner Wayhill, is there any discussion? Seeing all in favor and the committee saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 2025, 2056, approval of an agreement between the Genesee County and the GLS Region Five Planning and Development Commission. In the amount of $126,795 to provide for staff services for regional transportation planning activities. The funding for this agreement is grant funded.
Support.
All right, been moved and supported by Commissioner, been supported by Commissioner Shoemaker, any discussion? Seeing all in favor and the committee by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes, there a report for economic development?
Report, Mr. Chair.
Right, no report, thank you, Finance Committee, Commissioner Martin Kuzno, Chairperson, Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Getzinger.
Mr. Chair, in lieu of the hour and the long day and evening, especially for staff, I want to move the whole agenda as consent.
Support.
All right, the entire finance agenda has been moved, supported by Commissioner Dr. Brown, is, are there any separations?
Six, please, if we may.
All right. Number six is separated, any additional separations? Seeing none, any discussion on items one through five? Seeing no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes, now we have before us Resolution 2025, 2076, Commissioner Kuzno.
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 25-2076, approval of moving forward with the Craftsman Industries for the purchase of a mobile home unit, health unit.
Support.
All right, been moved by Chair and supported by Commissioner Winfrey, any discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had some questions last time about the unit storage and everything else like that of it. I unfortunately am not, not opposed to taking help out to our residents where needed. My concern is, one, several people have brought up that there are budget concerns moving forward in the future of funding of certain programs. Which could affect our, the way we process and handle our healthcare in this county nation. And on top of it, I'm not thrilled with where this is going to be stored on top of it. It's a very expensive unit and I don't think we have a great plan for that and if something was to happen, we're going to be covering the cost to fix it and repair it. So, thank you very much and that's what I'm voting no.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, motion passes, is there a report of the Finance Committee?
Not at this point in time, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, no Finance Committee report, now that brings us to the Governmental Operations Committee, Chairperson Commissioner Dale Wayhill, Vice Chairperson Commissioner Sean Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll follow Commissioner Kuzno's advice and move one through six under the Governmental Operations Committee Agenda.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported by Commissioner Avery, are there any separations? All right, seeing no separations, are there any discussion on items one through six? Seeing no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes, is there a report of Governmental Operations Committee?
There is no report, thank you.
Okay, thank you, now that brings us to the Human Services Committee, Commissioner Charles Winfrey, Chairperson, Commissioner James Avery, Vice Chairperson, what is your pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman, I will move Resolutions one and two, but I do have an add on as well.
Okay, let's take items one and two first, if that's okay, and then we'll take the add on. All right, any support to move items one and two? Is somebody already supported? So we need support to move items one and two, supported by Commissioner Shoemaker, is there any, are there any separations of the two? Seeing no separations, is there any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes, now for your add on, Commissioner Winfrey.
Yes, sir, I'd like to add on a resolution from the Senior Services Director. Approve of an agreement between Genesee County and Benson's Valley Supplemental Staffing. In an amount not to exceed $65,000 to provide in-home personal care and homemaking services for eligible Genesee County seniors. From September 1/25 through September 30/26, costs will be paid from the following account.
All right.
And I so move.
All right, so, so will, is there support for add on number one in the Human Services Committee?
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported by Commissioner Dr. Brown, is there any discussion, Commissioner Kuzno and then Commissioner Shoemaker?
Okay, this is for the coming budget that we're working on now.
Lynn Radzalowski, our Senior Service Director is here and she can speak all things seniors.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Through the chair to you, Commissioner, this is a one month contract within this current year, September 1st through September 30th, 2025. We're using $65,000 from the fund balance to.
We're using $65,000 from the fund balance to help the transition of moving 300 senior clients from the family service agencies in-home personal care to the new provider, Benson's. We've been working behind the scenes to...with all the different providers, but now we want to start the transition so that no seniors lose any hours of service or don't go without their services.
This is in this year's budget.
This is this current year.
It is in the budget.
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I must point the...there's a typo in the resolution.
Yeah.
It should have been September 1/25 through September 30/25.
We'll update that.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion's been moved and supported. First, we're going to add it to the agenda. I'm coming to the...we're going to add it to the agenda, and we'll add it with the date changed. All right? All right, let's add it to the agenda and then come back to discussion. Is that okay? Go ahead.
I have various discussions, but this would be why we're adding it to the agenda.
Okay, go ahead. Proceed.
So, why was this brought through? What events took place that this is brought to us without going through subcommittee and being brought to us two, three months ago for approval?
This was on the sub...this was on last week's Human Services Agenda with my large 34 agenda items. With everything that went on, it did not cross my mind to ask for this to be pulled until the very next morning, when I was reviewing all of the ones, all of the things that were tabled. And so I asked for permission, because this is very time-sensitive, to go before...through HSC to the Board, so that we can have it approved for September 1.
Most items on there were for next year. This is for this year. That's what I'm trying to get to. Why is it just for a month this year? What's the...
To transition. So, starting October 1, we have 335 clients that will be dispersed from family service agency to the new agency, Benson's, along with Alternative Elderly Care. We want a smooth transition, so we don't have a contract with Benson's, so Benson's technically can't serve any of those seniors during the transition. So working with Corporation Council and what's needed, we want to make sure that the county is covered and that Benson's has the funding for this month to make that transition of the 300 clients. We already have a contract with Alternative Elderly Care, so we don't need an additional. We can still work with them.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, the motion...
Just a second. I just want to clarify something in my head here. Okay, so that's how much we spend to Benson's? Plan on spending to Benson every month?
This is for just this month. They will receive a different award amount based on a unit rate in the large contract that will come back again before you, with my very large agenda. This is a separate one, just for one month, to do the certain hours for the transition.
And then again, who provided the service prior to this that Benson has taken over for?
So we go through an RFP process every three years. This year, one of the RFPs that was up was for in-home personal care and shore services. There were two bids that came in, Alternative Elderly Care, our current provider, and Benson's. Unfortunately, FSA did not turn their response in on time and therefore could not be part